Stand by to launch FanStream Sports.
Three, two, one.
Let's start.
Hello, sports fans. Welcome to FanStream Sports. Nothing, nothing but pure sports. This is the JP Show.
JP, it's so good to hear you back on the air.
Stand by now. Here's JP.
All right, welcome into a hump day edition of the JP Peterson Show, but that was smooth, wasn't it? It's kind of where this morning is going, no question about it. Welcome to the show. Thank you guys so much for joining us here. It is a momentous day in Tampa Bay for so many reasons. We got a lot of bucks to talk about. The Falcons have made a major, major move benching Kurt Cousins. The Bolts last night were cruising to a four nothing victory as we celebrated Vassie's 500th game and yikes. Something happened on the way to the shutout that wasn't very good. So we'll get to that, but mostly it's about the Rays and the stadium debacle and the stadium saga that continues to drag on and on and on. Chris Laffela will join us, Commissioner Pinellas County, who has been in the crosshairs of the Rays for quite some time to be the fall guy for what everyone is now realizing is their problems and why they don't want to build a stadium and that this has been a real estate deal the whole time. That's what we've been telling you for months and months and months that the St. Pete deal would never go through. And here we are. So good morning to you, Tim Hamm, who must be, you haven't even been dealing with it for 20 years like we have.
No.
You still have stadium fatigue. You still.
Yeah. So you know, here in Texas, when we want to build a stadium, we, we just sign some papers and go build it. We don't have all this rigmarole that you guys have. So I can't even, I've been doing this show with you for a little over a year and like I've been here, all I've been hearing is stadium talk for, and I'm, I've tired at so much every morning.
You know, I apologize, but it's, it's such a huge story.
It is for sure.
And, and it's great to get your fresh perspective, especially coming from a place that has built more baseball stadiums while we've been alive. Then we can't get one done. And everybody, you know, have always pointed fingers at every place else. And I've always said, no, the problem is Stu Sternberg. And I think everyone now is realizing this, and it's not about me being right. It's not about that. It's about illumination that people are finally throwing away the false narrative narratives that have been promulgated in, in our mainstream media for so long. And are finally starting to realize that Stu is the problem and he's always been the problem. And if it wasn't for a very, very greedy owner, this deal would have been done a long time ago where the stadium needs to be in Tampa. All these things are so ridiculously evident and common sense, but the water has been muddied for so long. But I think Chris Laffela put it so well yesterday in his soliloquy at the Pinellas County Commission that will go down in commission history. That, I mean, shots fired is, doesn't do it enough justice. And I can't wait to talk to him at 10:15 live here to, to kind of go through what is next, what happened yesterday. And illuminate a little bit more on his conversation with Rob Manfred, which I think is the key to this whole deal. And what he said yesterday, and we're going to play it right now for you in case you missed it.
Pretty good.
I mean, listen, county commission meetings, city council meetings, they're boring. They're horribly boring. Someone actually did a poem yesterday at the podium. I think I didn't see it. But this was without doubt the best moment in county commission history.
This is better than any wrestling show. If y'all watch wrestling, this is better than wrestling. All right. This is no holds barred right here.
So like, if there was a wrestling analogy here, I'm not a wrestling fan, but you guys can, you guys in the comments are like, pick a moment in wrestling smackdown history that reminds you of what Chris Laffela did to Stu Sternberg yesterday. Because when I heard it, I was just like, and for me, it is, it's yes, it is somewhat vindication that there is somebody with legislative weight that has been elected by the people that now shares with you people the same things I've been telling you for so long about this situation and how Rob Manfred, the commissioner of Major League Baseball now understands what he's dealing with. And now wants new ownership. And, and, and there is a ground swell in Tampa and a group in Tampa that is interested in buying the Rays and building in Tampa. I mean, if you can't see this subtext and people are still calling me crazy. Taylor, you know who you are, Knowles fan, love you. I'm not living in a fantasy world. I'm living in a very real world where a stadium is, is finally built in Tampa. There's too much at stake. I know people are tired of it, but this is the 12th largest market with the 18th largest market down the road or 11th, whatever you want to call it. It's two top 20 markets. Major League Baseball is not leaving this market. We gotta tell you this, they're not building in St. Pete, in my opinion. This, the deal, the bond approval yesterday does not mean this deal is going through because this is what the Rays, the most tone deaf organization in the history of sports said after they approved the bonds, after the city and the county said, we're going to give you $1.7 billion in public money. That's the real cost. When you add in the, the, the tax savings, real estate tax savings, the infrastructure and the, the debt service, a public money, it's at least 1.7 billion. That's not enough. You know, the infrastructure, 141 billion, that's not, that's not enough. A million, it's not enough. The six to seven, eight hundred million dollar profit on the real stuff. No, 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 no. It's not enough. They're the Rays. That's not enough. This is what they wrote. It was unsurprising to see the commissioners acknowledge how important the Tampa Bay Rays and our stadium development agreement are to this community and its citizens. As we have made clear, the county's delay has caused the ballpark completion to slide into 2029. As a result, the cost of the project has increased significantly and we cannot absorb this increase alone. When the county and city wish to engage, we remain ready to solve this funding gap together. Yes, that's not enough. We need more. $2.5 billion. It's not enough. We need more. Give us more money. It's not enough.
Unbelievable.
Unbelievable. And I love it. We're ready. We're ready to solve this funding gap together. And let me just, it's not a funding gap. It's a cost overrun that you agreed to pay. It's not a funding gap. I don't ever want to see those words printed outside of a letter that you write because that's not what it is. It's not a funding gap. It's a cost overrun that you were supposed to pay and you agreed to because you were given so damn much in this boondoggle, the biggest boondoggle in history. And for Stu Sternberg and the Rays, it's still not enough. We need more. What an embarrassment to Major League Baseball.
Funding gap sounds so much more politically correct than cost overrun, right? And it's not our fault. If it's a funding gap, it's not our fault.
Oh, because, and, and here prove that you've spent the $50 million that you say you spent. Oh, we don't have any documentation to prove that. And we're not coming to the meeting to prove it either. Oh, okay. Great. Well, prove that you've read, met all the requirements that you're supposed to. No, we don't have any documents for that either.
Yeah, we don't want to.
I mean, it's just, it's, it's laughable. It's laughable. Okay, let's, let's, let's stop burying the lead. Let's get to the money. Let's play, let's play the greatest comment soliloquy in the history of the Pinellas County Commission, courtesy of Commissioner Chris Laffela. You are at the plate, my friend. Here comes a fastball from Esteban Gahn and watch him just hit this one 500 feet.
Thank you, ma'am chair.
Hang on. Got to move my sound. Hang on.
Oh, with that great intro too.
Last week I spoke to MLB Commissioner Rob Manfred, who expressed the importance of passing these bonds to keeping the Rays in Tampa Bay. While I do not trust the owner of the Rays, I trust Mr. Manfred. He is committed to this market. I view him as an ally when the owner of this franchise has for some reason decided to become an adversary. Rob Manfred is the reason I am voting yes on this today. MLB is aware of several instances where the Rays organization has intentionally tried to kill the very deal that they agreed to. I hope our vote today helps set the wheels in motion for a new owner and a new era of Tampa Bay Rays baseball. Rays fans deserve to have our own Vinick, Steinbrenner, Glazer, or Middleton, who cares as much about the fans and community as his own bottom line. I believe Commissioner Manfred's eyes are now wide open to the reality of our penny pitching, penny pinching, double dealing ownership. He's watched one of his franchises use two devastating disasters and a few days delay in the bond vote to try to gain an advantage for themselves. He's seen them try to torpedo their own deal by calling one of our colleagues who supported this deal a liar after he asked them to try to, to make a simple public pronouncement of support. He's heard them publicly call this deal dead numerous times. Mr. Manfred and MLB need to keep watching and listening. Because once these bonds are passed, Stu Sternberg will demand even more money. And when he doesn't get it, he will threaten to move the team again. Most importantly, Mr. Manfred and the 29 other owners of Major League Baseball teams should see clearly now that our fans and residents deserve a new owner for our beloved team. I think it is very possible that Stu Sternberg will try to keep the land development deal and use the hundreds of millions of dollars that they, that he will receive from that to move the Rays out of this market if we do not pass the bonds. The land deal was one of the reasons why I voted no in the first place. But I will not allow the owner of the Rays to reap the profits of that land deal while the Rays are not even playing in Tampa Bay. Because at the end of the day, Stu Sternberg will always care about his bottom line above all else. That is proven over the years. Now, now that this process has exposed him, I urge Mr. Sternberg to sell the team to someone who lives here, works here, and truly cares about our community. An owner who won't threaten to take his bats and balls or change the rules when the game he, he agreed to play isn't going his way. Stu, you're up.
Stu, you're up. You're up. Yeah. And it's, and then that letter followed that, that they want more money and they're, and they're ready and waiting to do a new deal. They're ready and waiting to do a new deal. Uh, it's, it's absolutely laughable. If it wasn't so sad because Stu Sternberg has wasted the time of, of the Tampa Sports Authority, the fans in Tampa, going back to 2018, 2019, and I've, I have railed for so long about the false narratives that he has put out about not having corporate support in Tampa. That was the bold faced lie. Not that there's no money in Tampa. That is a lie as well. We saw in the, in the, the deal that they were going behind St. Pete's back while they were doing the deal with them. They were listening to, to another pitch from Tampa. We told you about this months ago in July. And, and in that deal, something that was revealed was part of that a funding element gave $30 million per year towards building the stadium. That's $900 million over the life of the stadium. There's money to be built, to build a stadium over there. But it's a pay as you go and protects the taxpayers and is a true public private partnership, not like this boondoggle that they tried to put through in St. Pete and over Pinellas County. And it's, it, this finally, at least now we've come to the point there where the county is protected and the city is protected from the Rays stealing this land and stealing those profits to go maybe build a stadium in Tampa. As much as I want a stadium in Tampa, because I think it's best for the Rays, not best for Tampa, but best for the area, best for the long-term growth and Rays fans, I would never want that stadium built with money from St. Petersburg. That was nefariously taken from them. And I, and I dare say Ken Hagan and no one in Hillsborough County Commission would, would, would do a deal with Stu under those circumstances. Nobody would. And that's the right thing to do. And hopefully new ownership solves all this. So let's bring in the man who wrote that and delivered that so well, that grand slam homerun yesterday after the county commission. Chris Laffela, Chris, thank you for taking the time to come on the show here. First of all, I know you've been through a lot, the death threats and all this. And I think as of yesterday, I think people saw your true heart and what you were trying to do. And you voted yes, and the bonds are issued. And in the end, you guys with your due diligence of your commission. And I think the entire commission did a fantastic job through this whole deal. You did the right thing. And I think it's the, the ball is in his court now and we'll see where it goes. What's been the reaction from, from yesterday's vote?
Good morning, JP. I mean, I think overall it's been a pretty good reaction. You know, people seem to understand what we are getting at. You know, and it's not just about calling bluffs and, you know, but it's about really protecting Major League Baseball in Tampa Bay. You know, and that's where I was coming from. You know, with what I, you know, the speech that I gave and, and the questions I asked and, and the reason why I voted the way that I did.
It seems to me in your conversation with Commissioner Manfred that he's upset with what the Rays have done and how they've handled this. Is that, what can you tell us about that?
I mean, I don't want to get too much into detail about what all he said. I can tell you that he was very emphatic with his commitment to keeping Major League Baseball in Tampa Bay. He was unwavering in his support. He also was unwavering in his support of passing the bonds with, with the goal of keeping baseball in Tampa Bay. And, and that was something that we talked about. And so, and he had some questions, or he answered some questions I had and, and our county administrator has also talked to him a couple of times throughout this process and has relayed some questions I had and, and, you know, and, and the commissioner of baseball has been very helpful in this process and, and, you know, he's the reason I voted the way that I did. Because, you know, while I do not trust Stu Sternberg, you know, I trust Rob Manfred and I trust the other, you know, 29 owners of Major League teams not to screw over Tampa Bay.
Do you get a sense that this deal now is going to go through? I don't because I don't, I know the county's not giving any more money. And I mean, I know the city's not giving any more money and there is a quote, funding gap, which I think is the most ridiculous thing ever. It's called a cost overrun. What do you think?
So it did not surprise me that the Rays asked for more money. It did surprise me that they asked for more money 10 minutes after the vote. And so, I mean, and it kind of proved the whole point that we were making.
Yeah.
And, you know, if, and not to be rude, because I will never have the money that Stu Sternberg has. But if you cannot afford a Major League Baseball team, you need to sell it. And, you know, and do us all a favor, make your, you know, $200 billion and go about, you know, your life and be a rich man. But, you know, if you can't fill a gap that you said that you were going to fill. And part of the Rays agreeing to fill the, the cost overruns was part of the agreement that they made with the land development deal. So they basically want to have it their, their whole, you know, have the whole thing.
Right.
And, and that's why my comments were directed yesterday to Rob Manfred, to the other owners, because I want them to see that, okay, if this guy cannot take, cannot make this deal work, he's never going to make any deal work.
Exactly.
And, and the fans and the residents need to have somebody else to own our team because it's not, you know, the, the, the issues are not as, you know, because of fan apathy, some of the issues are with ownership. And, you know, there, and I think I said it last time I was on your show, the, the baseball people with the Rays are brilliant people.
Yep.
They have a competitive team. You know, and they do a great job in that regard, but the penny pinching, the, you know, nickel and diming on the stadium deal, not being able to get a deal done in Tampa, not being able to get a deal done in Pinellas. If he can't make a deal work now, he's never going to make a deal work.
Right. Do you think that, that he ever wanted to build this stadium or intended to build this stadium?
I mean, I think.
Just about the land deal? That's what I think. I don't think, I don't think he ever intended to.
And, and I've thought about this a lot and I don't trust the Rays. And, and I, like, I like Brian and Matt, Brian Ald and Matt Silverman.
As do I.
And, and I think those guys, and, and those were the folks that I dealt with a lot. I've actually only met Stu twice. I've actually met Jeff Vinick more than that. And he, you know, was in Hillsborough County.
Yeah.
And, you know, but it got to a point where I quit trusting the Rays. And, but I think there was one moment during this whole process that they were being honest. And it was something that you hit on and you were one of the very few people that hit on it and noticed it. And that was the conversation that Brian Ald had with Brian Scott, the day before the very first delay that we had. And I didn't know about that conversation then because of the, the sunshine law. But at the next meeting, when Brian Scott mentioned that, started talking about that phone call, I was sitting across the room from Brian Ald. So I looked at, I was able to see his face. And I could tell that he was not happy. And I knew that that was a, like, that phone call was a moment of sincerity. And they were being honest that they did, that their funds and their finances had gone in a completely opposite direction and their expenses had gone up. I think part of it was the hurricane, but I think part of it was just general, you know, expenses with construction, general, you know, budgetary issues. And so I don't, I think it, you know, they probably at some point would have said, we can't afford this. We need help. But I think the hurricanes certainly didn't help. I think they're going to be losing money playing in Tampa. I think for years they've made money year over year. This year they won't. Most franchises lose money, especially the large market teams lose money every year. But, you know, I think that was a moment that they were being sincere. So then it got to a point where, okay, these, these folks can't make this work. So now we need to do something to try to protect baseball in Tampa Bay. And, you know, I told you last time I was on that, that I was a huge baseball fan and I was never gonna allow them to try to leave.
So at this point, you talked a lot about new ownership and, and I got a sense that Rob Manfred is looking for new ownership. That's my sense. I know there's a group in Tampa that's trying to, and there have been several groups here locally that have tried to buy the Rays over the last couple of years. What is your sense for the appetite for Major League Baseball to, because look, there's a precedent here. Major League Baseball told Vince Namoli, he needs to sell the team and was forced to sell the team. And, and, and I think there's a, there's a lot of inertia here from the fans and I think from other owners that would like to see a deal done here. And I think they finally realized that Stu has been the impediment. Do you think that new ownership is, is something that could happen soon?
Yeah. I mean, I, and, and I've heard some of the same things you have and not necessarily from, you know, Major League Baseball, just people locally. And, you know, it was close, there was close, you know, to a deal a year or so ago. And surprisingly, Stu wanted more money and that killed the deal. And I've heard, you know, groups in Tampa, probably the same folks that you've heard. And I've heard, you know, groups, you know, in Pinellas, you know, but the important thing is that it's Tampa Bay people. You know, and if we, you know, Jeff Vinick is one of the greatest owners that we've ever had in Tampa Bay. He was not a Tampa Bay guy, but he understood, you know, the community aspect and, and he's going to go down in history. You know, as one of the, the greatest, not just business people in Tampa Bay, but the greatest, you know, sports owners in Tampa Bay.
Hundred percent. Yeah. And, and I love that you mentioned him yesterday and we need someone like that. And I think there are people that, that can step up and do that. And you mentioned this last time you were on that you want baseball in Tampa Bay and you, you're quite fine if, if it does happen in Tampa. Obviously Pinellas residents would, would love to have it, but not at the cost of this deal. And I think that's, that's kind of the, the lesson we're taking out right now, correct?
Yeah. I mean, I love Pinellas County. I love Clearwater. Um, you know, that's not a secret. If I had, if I was the owner of the team and I had Steve Cohen money or, you know, George Steinbrenner money, whatever. And I own the Tampa Bay Rays and I could pick where in Tampa Bay I own the team, it would be a whole lot closer to Tampa than it is now. Because you need to be able to attract a larger population base. And whether that's in Tampa or whether that's, you know, right on the other side of the bridge in Pinellas, you know, I'm not sure, but it definitely needs to be in a larger population base. Cause that's part of the problem. And as I said last time I was on, you know, for years, the current ownership of the Rays complained about the location and talked about how fish don't go to baseball games and, and the, you know, they couldn't draw fans. They couldn't draw the corporate sponsorship. You know, I'm at the point now where I'm not sure that the corporate sponsorship really is the issue that they think it is. I think part of the issue is the ownership.
Yes.
Cause I'm not sure how respected they are in, you know, with the, the business community.
You said that Manfred's eyes are wide open to the penny pinching owner, which is absolutely fantastic. Is there a sense that baseball, you think Manfred and these other owners are, are tired of what Stu's been doing? Are they embarrassed by the way he's, he's handled this situation? The, the letter to the county right after the hurricanes, when you dared delay by a few days, a vote where the deadline wasn't until March anyway.
So, yeah. So, you know, I can tell you that Major League Baseball is aware of all the correspondence that they gave. They're aware of the Rays going to a city council meeting in St. Pete and saying, do not repair the trop. You know, we don't want you to repair the trop. Major League Baseball, and I'm sure you know this, one of their requirements or like policies of a Major League Baseball team is you have to give Major League Baseball an approved plan to play in a Major League Baseball park. So if you're a baseball owner, you can't tell them, hey, I'm going to go play in this high school field or I'm going to go play in this minor league ballpark in town. You have to play in a Major League ballpark. So you can't just, you know, have your own plan or whatever. And, you know, when you do things in a government meeting, that's different than going to the media and trying to, you know, gain leverage or gain public support for something. And so, I mean, the, the, the Major League Baseball is aware of those instances and, you know, I'm, I'm not going to speak on their behalf about that, but you know, one of the concerns was if the bonds don't pass, it gives the current owner, the ability to go to owners' meetings and complain about the local government. You know, say Pinellas County and the city's not cooperating. I don't have a place to play.
Right.
You know, and kind of play the victim card.
Right.
Well, if this current deal doesn't go through and it's because he doesn't have the money.
It's on him.
It's going to be very hard for him to go to an owners' meeting and say, they gave me $700 million. They gave me a massive development plan that I wanted. A hurricane hit and they, now they won't give me a couple hundred million dollars that, for the cost overruns, even though I already agreed to it.
Right.
Like, that's going to be a hard thing for him to sell to his colleagues.
Is there, by the way, is there any proof that they spent the $50 million that they said that you guys asked for proof?
Oh, yeah. And so that's the other thing about them, you know, kind of just doing their own thing. So they said they spent $50 million. And, and so we asked last week, or I asked last week for evidence of that. And they sent us expenditures on Monday of $11 million. So, so there, there are a few starting pitchers short of their $50 million.
Well, they saved all that money on spring's contract. You think they'd have a little bit more, right? Where the payroll's down to 60 million. How much lower is it going? Are we going to get? Is, is there any hitters involved in this? Or we paid some of that money in the hitters?
Give them credit. They did look into Juan Soto. So.
Sure they did. Yeah. What does that mean? They turned on SportsCenter? See what the number was? Is that what looking into it means?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so they didn't provide that. And, and by the way, all of their arguments are based on these cost overruns. Have they provided any proof that there are cost overruns?
Right.
Or they looked into a crystal ball and said, you know, concrete's going up, labor's going up, all, you know, and that can't happen. It could also go the other way. It could also go the other way. So.
And so I talked, we, we have a stadium consultant who represents the county, who was at our meeting yesterday and. Um, who was at our meeting yesterday and he has worked in his career. Doing like 25 different stadium deals around the country, all different major sports. And one of the questions I asked him during the meeting yesterday is, you know, based on your experience, does a 30 or 60 day. Delay result in a couple hundred million dollars in cost overruns? And he said, no, he chuckled and said, no. And I said, what would be the result of that? Well, you know, budgeting, construction, inflation. You know, all different kinds of things. But if you're looking at a project that's. You know, over a billion dollars, that's not unexpected.
Right.
I mean, it's not.
Really expected. It happens all the time.
Right. And so if they weren't planning on that.
Yeah.
Then, you know, that's, that, that says something. And so then you go back.
They were never planning to build the stadium to me.
So then you go back to, okay, why weren't you planning on that? And if their excuse is, well, we, you know, we didn't know we were going to be losing the trop and. You know, now we're playing elsewhere. It shows up, they didn't have the money to begin with. Because they're just basically, you know, the money comes in, the money goes out and, you know.
They wanted that, they wanted that big upfront money from you guys. And that's the way the deal was.
They were, they were planning on making their $50 million this year, whatever they make every year. Based on the revenue sharing and based on their TV contract. And, and if that money didn't happen this year, then they're screwed and they don't have that. Well, if that's the case, you should not be a Major League Baseball owner.
Right. Exactly. And, and, and let's not, and all the money they've made, where'd that money go? What about the $500 million that was put into a separate company according to the lawsuit, the, the partners? Where'd that money go? That upfront money that he got from the TV contract? Where did that money go? They got plenty of money. They, they got plenty of money and they've, they've made plenty of money. All right. Last question, Chris, just as you sit here today. Do you think this deal ever gets done in St. Pete? Is there going to be a renegotiation? How do you see this happening?
I mean, uh, as for a renegotiation, no. Um. I, as for the county, no. Um, I don't see a single one of my colleagues voting to give them another penny. Um, and if there's one, there won't be two, but I can't name a single one of my colleagues, even the ones. That were staunchly supportive at the very beginning. I do not see them voting to give them another penny. At this, I don't want to speak for the city, um, but Mayor Welch has publicly said he's not giving them another penny. And, and for the Rays to ask a city. Who just had the same hurricane that went through the trop, to ask them to pony up more money. Is incomprehensible.
It is.
Um, because the city is not using bed taxes. They're using completely different revenue streams than the county is. And that is just to, to ask the St. Pete residents, for the Rays to ask the St. Pete residents. That is just absolutely unconscionable.
Yep.
And, and Stu Sternberg, for no other reason, should be ashamed to do that right after hurricane. And, I mean, he should just do us all a favor and sell the team and move on down the road.
I agree. Hundred percent. Been with it. So, so I'm, I'm going to say that's a no. You don't think this deal's getting, that's, that's a no.
No, I mean, and, and, and so that's really why I said that it was about Tampa Bay. Um, you know, and keeping baseball in Tampa Bay. I can tell you with near certainty that I believe baseball stays in Tampa Bay. Um, I can't give you a near certainty that it's going to be at the gas plant district or in Pinellas County or anything like that.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Well, Chris, uh, again, thank you for your courage on this. I think those of you have tried to vilify you and that's specifically the Rays and the Tampa Bay Times. Um, shameful, uh, that you would get death threats from this because I think everybody knows now it's come full circle. And they know where the blame lies. Hopefully, uh, it should be evident to everyone now. Um, and I appreciate your, your passion for baseball. So what, what did you think of the Springs salary dump? Uh, what, in fact, we might be done not, we're not going to add any hitters here besides.
I mean, if Dan, if Jansen's their big off-season offensive move. Might be a rough year offensively. I, I love the, I love the starting rotation. And so, you know, and they had access pitchers in the starting rotation. So I think it's fine. Um, you know, to trade a pitcher. I'm a little concerned that Yandy might be on the trading block.
Well, if you trade Jeffrey Springs, get me a hitter back. But you can't do that because to get a bona fide hitter.
Right.
You have to add salary and Eric Neander's got both hands and his feet tied behind his back. He's not allowed to do that.
And I think Eric Neander's brilliant. And, you know, with the stadium that they're going to be playing in. If they could load up with some lefties with some pop.
Yes.
Um, they can do some damage.
Yeah, especially with this pitching staff. All right, Chris, thanks again for your courage. I appreciate it. And, uh, we'll, uh, we'll talk soon. Thanks.
All right, man. See you.
Chris Lappala right there.
Go Bucks.
Yeah, go Bucks too. Yeah, absolutely. What do you think, Tim? What do you think? Mister, I got more baseball stadiums than I need.
You know what, what I, what I, Chris, okay, first of all, Chris, this is the second time we've had him on. And I just kind of back up and get out of the way when you have him on, because I don't want to, I'll, I'll just probably interject something stupid. So I just let it go, right? But, uh, Chris is a brilliant dude. And he is, uh, first of all, he is an asset to Pinellas County and Commissioner's office there and the, in the office. And, um, you guys, they, they're lucky to have them. But, um, it, it seems like it's just such an uphill battle. And he put it so eloquently in, in the, the meeting, in his speech at the meeting that we had before he was on. About how he, he doesn't trust the owner. And the only reason he's, he voted for the deal was because of Rob Manfred's, um. You know, promise to the, to the area or his, 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 what's the word I'm looking for? Um, commitment to, to Tampa Bay and the area.
Which we've always told you.
Yeah.
We've always told you that, yeah.
But it's funny that while I was listening to that too, I was thinking about, you know, here again, I was kind of going back to our deals that we've had here. And then I thought about the Astros in Houston and I'm like. Do we realize that both Major League teams in the state of Texas have relatively new retractable roof stadiums? You know, Minute Maid Park or whatever it's going to be called now. And of course, Globe Life in Arlington. And they still have their old ballparks right next door to the new stadium still. Like the Astrodome is still there. It's empty and vacant, but it's still there.
Yeah.
You know, and we still have the ballpark in Arlington and Cowboy Stadium, like in the triangle right there. But it's, it should not be this hard to get a stadium done deal for a beloved. You know, asset to your community like the Rays are. And people, I, and I get. They, they call it a, a lack of support for the team. It's not a lack of support for the team. It's an inability to support the team physically because of where the stadium is. And their inability to be able to get there on a regular basis when there are games. And I thought Chris made a really good point. And I don't remember if it was in the, in the, the meeting thing we played, the recording that we played, or if it was just now. But he said something about, uh, it's, it's not just, it's not necessarily a lack of support for the Rays. It's a lack of support for their owner.
That's right. That's right.
You know what? We've been calling for that here in Dallas for, for 30 years, for people to boycott Jerry Jones and to hate the Cowboys. Because of Jerry Jones, quit going to the games and quit buying his merchandise and he'll feel it. That's the only way you can make change, right? Well, Tampa, they're doing that with the Rays because they don't like Stu and he is not good for the community.
No.
And people are figuring that out. The county's figured it out. The city's figured it out.
And now Major League Baseball has figured it out.
And now Major League Baseball is figuring out, and sooner he is gone, I don't mean the Rays, I mean, I mean, I mean, Stu. Sooner he is gone, then Rob Manfred could move forward, I think, with, with baseball back in Tampa Bay and the area. In a, in a suitable location for the entire community, in a suitable location, in a stadium that's good for the community. That doesn't screw anybody. It is, I know Tampa, you guys think it's not possible, but trust me, it is.
It's possible. I know. You know, and, and I'll, I'll just going to do one little close on this. Uh, to kind of incorporate all that has gone on for 20 years on this, uh, if I can, um, because we're at that point. And I've taken a lot of heat and Chris Lopel has taken a lot of heat. Um, you know, anybody that is opposed to Sternberg has taken a lot of heat. Uh, he's got a lot of political allies in the media. Uh, he owns a lot of the media in terms of sponsorship deals. I personally have taken, you know, my, my personal life has taken a hit because of my opposition to Stu Sternberg. And this has never been personal for me with Stu Sternberg, even though he's made it personal to me. Um, and it's, and my feelings and my love for Tampa Bay have always been what this is about for me. And people like, oh, JP, you want the stadium in Tampa. Listen, I lived in St. Pete when I first moved here. I worked in St. Pete. I love St. Pete. I love downtown St. Pete. I love the beaches. I love St. Pete. I love the Tampa Bay area. It is my home and has been for 27 years. Um, my business is here.
Right.
Um, you know, full disclosure, I'm temporarily living out of the market, but moving back soon. Um, but my work is here. I'm, I'm here all the time. I love baseball and I love the people of this, the city that love baseball. And the Jason Romanos that, and the Fred McGriffs and the Tino Martinez is all these people that love baseball. And the fans and the little leagues that my kids played in, you know, Bay Shore Little League and Palmasia. I mean, I know the fabric of this, this, this Tampa Bay area and how much we love baseball. And it makes me so angry. That one man, the way he has run this team, has screwed it all up for all of us. And, and it's, and, and that's my problem with the whole thing. It's not personal. It's about how he's run the team, right? And how he has screwed over the city of St. Petersburg for so long. Cause I've talked to these mayors. Bill Foster, Foster wrote a big thing on Facebook yesterday about how dealing, he knew all about dealing with, with Stu Sternberg and Rick Christman. And all the mayors that have dealt with him and, and the folks in Tampa, the TSA and everybody, I know all these people and they all say the same things. It's about Stu. He's never wanted to get a deal done unless he gets everything. And I mean, everything. Look at the, what St. Pete has given them. And it's still not enough. This is not about our passion for baseball. It's not about we're bad fans. It's not about if Florida doesn't support. It's about one guy who has done everything he can to alienate the fan base, cheap out on payrolls. Keep this team where in, in a, in a, in a mausoleum that nobody wants to go to, that's inaccessible for a major majority. And there was plenty of answers and plenty of corporate money and plenty of passion to do this right. And we got a second chance to not, to, to can this deal because why? He was so greedy, he wouldn't even agree to this. And now finally, Major League Baseball, they've been embarrassed enough of the banners for Montreal at a freaking playoff series. Are you kidding me? Constantly blaming the fans for low payrolls while he stuffs his pockets, constantly blaming the fans for everything. And it just, it, I love Tampa Bay and I want this done right. So we have for generations to come. We truly can have a baseball stadium and can go where the masses can, can, can congregate and love baseball. We're going to get a taste of that at Steinbrenner Field this year. Hell, it takes the Yankees to give us a stadium where we can show the people of Tampa Bay and the world that we love baseball. And we're going to fill that sucker. And it pains me that that money's going to go into his pocket, but whatever. Let's show up and show the world how much we love baseball. And hopefully Rob Manfred, and I think this is happening finally, will force him out. Let him take, as Chris said, take the $2 billion in profit, get a local ownership group that's going to do it right. And the city of St. Pete, it can build on that beautiful piece of land and make it a much better place to live. With something you actually need, not a baseball stadium. Most of the people in St. Pete don't want it anyway. And they certainly don't want to pay for it. And they shouldn't have to, especially after these hurricanes. St. Pete is the place for our beaches and a beautiful eclectic downtown. Build more local restaurants, not chains, but local restaurants. Build a ho, a hotel and an entertainment district and an arts district that you can be proud of and you love and that you're going to make money on. Not giving it to a billionaire who hates your city and has never supported it. That's what you should do. And we'll come over there. We love going to downtown St. Pete if we're in Hillsborough. It's got beautiful downtown, great music scene, great food. We love the beaches. That's what you are. You're our beaches and you're our great downtown and all the stuff that goes on up in. That's your job. Our job is to have stadiums and, and airports and have the hub of the business. That's the job of Tampa. And the outlying areas of the beautiful areas of Tampa Bay and the waters and the fishing and everything that makes it, it all comes together as one. And we're together, unity in the community, as Chris Thomas used to say. That's, that's what this should be about, not Tampa versus St. Pete and we get the Rays and you get, no, it's not how it works. You're the beaches, you're the beautiful arts and community. We're the, we have all the dirty stuff over here, you know, we, the port and all that and the airport. We do that, that's fine. Yeah, we got to cross bridges. That's no big deal. It's never been about that. It's just, let's do it right. Let's do it right. And get a local ownership that truly loves Tampa Bay. And it would do anything to make it work, to make it work. That's how it gets done. You gotta have people that want to make it work. Not whose, whose sole goal is to suck every penny out of the city they can possibly find. And hopefully, we're at the cusp of making that happen. Rob Manfred, you know what to do. And really this is in your court. Commish, it's in your court. You see it, you know it now. There's people with money that want to buy the team. There's a way to get the stadium done in Tampa. Ken Hagan's all over that. And to protect the taxpayers and to pay as you go and everybody benefits. That's what, that's where I'm at. It's where I've always been at. It's not personal. It's about my love for baseball in Tampa Bay and Rays fans in general.
Well, and what I don't understand is we have, we have a model for this.
Yeah.
We have dozens of models for this that are successful, that prove that it can work, right? When the ownership and the county, the city, everybody works together towards that one common goal.
Yes.
Right? We have Atlanta, we have Dallas, Houston, Pittsburgh, Cincinnati, St. Louis.
Denver.
San Francisco, Denver. They've all done this and it works. And for the, the, the fact that Stu wants to reinvent the wheel to benefit himself, to fill his pockets. That should tell you something. That should tell Major League Baseball something right there that he, his inability to go with what's already proven to work. Because it doesn't suit his wants. And it doesn't fill his pockets enough. Like it will fill his pockets doing it the right way, but not enough to suit him because he wants more. That to me, that should tell everyone what you need to know about Stu Sternberg. Come, come at me, Stu. I'm in Texas. Do your work.
Just.
And.
He might just.
And it's just, it's, it's tell, should tell everyone, everything they need to know about him as a businessman, as a business leader.
Yeah.
And maybe even as a human being. Sorry.
It is that time of year where the Grinch heart grows.
Oh, he's on the naughty list. I will tell you this right now.
Remember that, that the end of the Grinch, right? Where the heart, you know, that was 20 sizes too small, suddenly fills and gets bigger and bigger and bigger. Actually, we don't want that to happen. We just want the Grinch to move out of town.
Yeah, just move out of town. That's all we want. Bad to happen to you.
But anyway, I hope it, I hope he has a transformation for that. All right. Um, we, we've gone too long here. But, uh, it's obviously the most important topic and where the drama is just so, it's so good. All right. We'll take a quick break. We'll come back on the other side. We've got Bucks to talk about. We've got Bolts to talk about. We've got college football and bowl games. And all kinds of crazy stuff going on. Uh, we are brought to you by the Jeeves Law Group, J E E V E S lawgroup.com. We are in the Jeeves Law Group studio as we speak in beautiful South Tampa. Uh, and if you have any legal questions whatsoever, they will give you a free case evaluation. How about that? Free case evaluation. Just contact them through the website. Tell them JP sent you. And obviously if you're in an accident, you want them representing you. They are local, they are trusted. And they get results. Have them get a big award for you. Scott Jeeves is a terrific, award-winning attorney that will fight hard for you. Trust me, when he fights, he fights. Back in three. Stay with us.
Hey, it's football season and we welcome back the Gator Report every Monday and Friday, sponsored by the Jeeves Law Group. J E E V E S lawgroup.com. Just go to the website. You can contact them through there. Scott Jeeves is a tremendous, aggressive attorney and a big Gator fan. So we appreciate him supporting this show. And of course, your Florida Gators. They are local, they are trusted and they get results, whether it's personal injury or anything else, any law matter at all. It's the Jeeves Law Group, J E E V E S lawgroup.com. Give them a call, tell them JP sent you. So many of our Tampa Bay neighbors are finding out the hard way from Hurricane Helene that homeowners insurance does not cover flood damage. You must have flood insurance. It's a separate policy. Immediately call Italiano Insurance at 813-877-7799. And they will shop around to find the best policy before rates go up. Lock it in. Over 60% are underinsured in Florida or you're not getting your discounts that you're entitled to. So do an insurance checkup at Italiano and they could save you thousands of dollars. Italiano will make sure you're with a highly rated insurer. So there are no surprises in your time of need. Our hearts go out to all our neighbors devastated by Helene. These are the times we're proud to protect all the pieces of your life. Italiano Insurance, 813-877-7799. Old Hurricane Helene put a hurtin' on Tampa Bay. And for many of you, the rebuild will be a long process. You must beware of unscrupulous contractors offering up quick fixes for incredible prices. It's a scam. So go with longstanding reputable companies like third generation plumbing and AC. My friend John Rodriguez has been serving Tampa Bay since 1995 with hundreds. My friend, John Rodriguez has been serving Tampa Bay since 1995 with hundreds of five-star reviews. If you need a new AC system or any home repairs from Helene, they will work with insurance companies to get you taken care of quickly. Expertly installed, of course, and a one-year maintenance plan and 10-year warranty included on all AC units. 0% financing for 60 months. Contact them at thirdgenerationplumbing.com or 813-961-8024. That's 813-961-8024, thirdgenerationplumbing.com.
Ciao, Paolo Tini here, owner of Cafe Paradiso, one of South Tampa premier traditional Italian restaurants. We were recently voted number three on open table list of Tampa Bay's top 10 restaurants. We're very proud of that. Because we take great care of preparing each dish by hand with homemade sauces, pastas, all the freshed local ingredients. You won't see the big institutional vendor trucks pulling up to our back door. We get our seafood from local vendors. Sometimes I even drive out to Topper Springs and pick out our daily catch right off those boats. So stop by in Salo. Try our traditional lasagna, the fresh veal, some of our signature dishes like Capelli al Granchio, that is angel hair with lump crab meat. Our branzino, that is a sea bass. We're located at 4205 South MacDill. And you can make a reservation on open table and read all the great reviews. See you soon. Ciao. Grazie.
Let's go. Right now, back to the show on Fan Stream Sports.
All right. Welcome back to the JP Peterson Show, brought to you by the great business of Italiano Insurance. Over 60 years doing business here locally. It's that time of year for your insurance checkup. It's pretty easy. Just call them 813-877-7799 and tell them you want an insurance checkup to run your house insurance, your homeowner's insurance, your flood insurance. Make sure you have the flood insurance folks, even if you're not in a flood area. You know what that's all about. Uh, your business insurance as well. If you don't have business insurance and you started a side hustle and you're making some money, you gotta have business insurance as well. You could get sued and lose all your personal wealth. Let them check your auto insurance, save you thousands of dollars, hundreds of dollars to do it all the time. They do all the work. You save all the money. Italiano Insurance, 813-877-7799. Um, all right, let's, uh, let's talk some football, my friend.
Real quick, did you hear the news coming out of Norfolk State this morning?
Uh, powerful Norfolk State? No.
The football powerhouse known as Norfolk State. Michael Vick has been named the new head coach of Norfolk.
From Norfolk.
Yeah. Of course played.
So they're going the Deon route.
I guess so. And you know, we've had some discussions with Mike. He's a friend of the network and a good friend of Johnny Gerbers. Uh, and.
Good dude.
A very good dude. There was no indication of this anywhere on the radar before this was announced. So best of luck to Mike at Norfolk State. I'll be following for sure. I'd never heard of Norfolk State, but you know what? I might go out and have to buy me a hat now.
You know, I think it's interesting. I think it speaks to a bigger movement in college football that now it's more about the charisma of the head coach. It always has been in a lot of different ways.
Yeah.
Um, it, you know, to attract NIL dollars, to attract, um, obviously players, recruit players who, uh, you know, these are their heroes and hey, why don't let's go play for a hero and to hire assistant coaches, you hire recruiters. I mean, Bill Belichick, Bill Belichick is kind of a little different approach than maybe Mike, Mike Vick and Deion Sanders, but he's a, he's a celebrity. He like, he's a big name coming into, you know, to run a program. Now do, obviously Deion has made it work and I think, um, he's unique in a lot of the things that he'd done. First of all, he did his apprentice work at Jackson State, which I think he needed to do. Uh, was wildly successful and moved it to, to Colorado. And I won't say it's wildly successful, but I think uh, taking them to night with nine wins they finished with, right? In the bowl game. Uh, and winning a Heisman trophy for Travis Hunter, all the attention that they got. I mean, that place is selling out. They built more premium seating. I mean, it's, it's bananas what's going on in Boulder there. So it worked and other people are following this model. Um, and we'll see if Mike Vick can pull it off.
Uh, I don't, I don't know if he has aspirations of being a big time college head coach or a big time NFL coach or anything like that, but you know, at the very least he's, he's probably fulfilling a little, you know, a, a, a check mark on his bucket list to try to get into coaching a little bit. And I think he'll be good at it. You know, you mentioned the charisma of head coaches. It's always been a thing, but especially in this day of social media. And it takes five seconds for a video clip to go from, from Norfolk, Virginia, all the way to the West Coast, you know, or something.
Yeah.
You need that even more than ever before. Cause before it was, it was more localized. Now it's, it's your, you're on a national, a national stage regardless of who you are or what level you coach at. It'll, some things will get out, right? So I think it's, I think it's good for him and I, I applaud it. And like I said, I'll be following Norfolk State.
Well, before we get into a little bit more college football talk, let's do comments since there's a lot of comments on the subject matter at hand. Um, and we thank you guys always for jumping in here. We really appreciate it. You're the lifeblood of the, of, of the show. Obviously we need viewers, we need listeners. And we need you people to, to pitch in and you do a great job of it.
There's no us without you.
That's right. That's right. Um, Yeezy says the Falcons just got a lot better. I know. I hate it. I hate it.
I don't know about that. I don't know about that.
Okay. Well, we'll debate this in a second. Um, I, I think it's a good move. I think it's bad for the Bucks. I think this gives them a chance. Um, cause they had no chance. Uh, Jeff Stutler says Tim, uh, Texas doesn't have Stu the swindler. Your owners have common sense.
Well.
That's how it gets.
Maybe except for Jerry.
And we, yes, we are the GMs as well.
That's right.
Uh, Daniel Rivera says, I wonder now JB, if that mystery billionaire you've been referring to that you met back on July 4th. Has Manford spoken with him behind the scenes? I would have to think, yes, he has. Uh, my information is that he has. He's very much aware of him and his deep, deep pockets.
It would be good for the Rays.
I'm not, again, I'm not saying it's getting done. Um, Stu still has to agree to sell the team and I'm sure he's going to ask for $3 billion and, and screw that deal. But uh, Major League Baseball now, they have a lot of power over their owners collectively.
Oh yeah.
And so they want to make it happen. They can make it happen, but he, he won't go quietly. Maybe he will now. Maybe he will. I think the tide has turned.
He's been exposed a little bit.
I think so. Yeah. And it'd be, you know, it's one thing to have, yeah, who was like me yelling and screaming about it. Somebody, it, it's not just Chris Lopola. It's every commissioner said the same thing. Every city, even the people that are for the deal that the city commission, even the mayor has said disparaging things about the Rays and how they've handled this, uh, and exposed them. So yes, I think, you know, yes, they still, he still has a few supporters left in the media, but I think even those folks are starting to, to open their eyes. Elijah Barrera says the Rays stadium drama just keeps on getting more weird. Stu should give us the gift of Christmas of selling the team and giving up ownership. Oh, if only I want that under my tree.
You know what? Someday there's going to be a 30 for 30 on this.
Yeah. Oh, oh yeah. And I'm writing it.
Produced by JP Peterson.
Already well in the works, partner. I, I have the treatment already at Netflix. Trust me. Um, Rick says Stu is the embodiment of every ex-wife in history.
Oh God.
That is such a perfect analogy. Oh my God. Yes. As soon as you get the agreement done, the attorney sends another line, you know, we, okay, we, we want this too. You know, so I can, we can build some more. Uh, Lonnie Wilkins says the quiet part is finally being said out loud in, in public media. Yes, Lonnie. Yes. Yes. Christopher calls, threw his trash shortened to the point I like it. Do that. Uh, Michael LaRue, good morning to you. Uh, Cousins has no, a no trade clause. He can force the Falcons to cut him and keep all his guaranteed money. And then sign with another team at league minimum like Russell Wilson. Yeah. Like Stu's trying to do.
That's exactly what's going to happen.
Yeah. Uh, well, Madden says amen, Chris Labbala. Um, Jordan G, what's, what's up, partner? Says my personal opinion of outcome of this Rays hold development rights for the trop land. Take the land deal worth hundreds of millions and develop, uh, and build a stadium in Ebor Harbor. Win, win, win. I, I, listen, I think that's what they'd want to do, but I'm, I'm telling you, the people of Hillsborough County will not, and Major League Baseball will not allow that. They just won't. It's, it's, it's too nefarious. It's too slimy. Um, I just don't think, and it'll, it'll be held up in the courts forever. And I think Stu's going to hold up the development of the trop site forever in court. Um, because he doesn't care about the people who need jobs. And that thing should have been developed five years ago under Rick Christman. He had a great plan. Would have been awesome. And we should have the new stadium in Tampa and should already be in it years ago. And Jordan continues, both sides, St. Pete, their new overpriced condos and businesses and no ballpark in Tampa gets new ballpark and Rays get new ballpark. Who knows though? Regardless, Rays are not giving up. I think he's right there. I don't think they're just going to go away. Um, maybe they will. Major League Baseball might force them to. Uh, Stu can't sue the city or county over this, right? Oh hell no. He can sue. He can sue for anything, right? Can sue a ham sandwich.
Um, yeah.
Man, now I'm hungry. Yeah. I, um, unfortunately I think this is going to end up in the courts. Uh, Jordan G said the land and that's their right. Pinellas can feel the Rays slipping to Tampa and will try to block any deal over here too. St. Pete deserves this treatment for all years. They've never let Tampa negotiate for decades and blocked this side forever. Congrats, Pinellas. You get what you deserve. I don't like that talk, Jordan. I don't like the Tampa versus St. Pete talk. I've never liked it. I don't support it. Um, I don't agree with it. It's, yes, has there been provincialism on both sides? Yes, there has. It needs to end. Um, that's all I'm gonna say. Lonnie Wilkins says this organization has been puppet stringed by Stu in so many ways, spitting in the face of Rays fans for trading fan favorites for nobodies, can't exchange Wander jersey and refusing, uh, to go all on. This is a great sports area. And the Rays are the only organization in town who act like St. Pete and Tampa are two entirely separate entities. A hundred percent true. That's absolutely true. All of that, Lonnie. And it just should never have been this way and doesn't have to be this way. Uh, Yeezy says, thank you, Chris. I think a lot of people are saying that now. All the people that hated on him and were goaded into him being the, the problem.
The bad guy.
That's another thing. To make him the villain, for the Rays to do that and other media entities to do that, to make him the villain when he was not the villain. And I told you that, and now you see that it's not him, you know, those people, they should apologize. They should apologize. All the people on Twitter who went after him, y'all should apologize to him. Maybe he should sue somebody. Um, how does Manford squeeze out Stu? Everyone is bluffing, high stakes game of chicken. You know, listen, Mike, it's, it's a good question that you ask. How does he do it? I don't know how it's done, but it's been done.
Been done.
Convinced the moly. Um, the Major League Baseball holds a lot of power over their owners collectively. I mean, the owner, obviously the owners run Rob Manford, but it's, and this is the thing, it's the other owners that are tired of this and want their expansion money. Right? And they can't get their expansion money until Tampa and Oakland get done. Tampa Bay and Oakland get done. And they're tired and, and now they're understanding it. Oh, it's not the people of Hillsborough County. It's not Pinellas. It's not their government down there. It's the owner. And they can do something about that.
They're tired of it. Yeah. They're, they're tired of it. It's a bad look for the league too, not just Tampa.
Um, James says, uh, but will the TBT and WDA continue to cover for Stu? These two media outlets are no better than the, the legacy media. Anyone who trusts what these hacks say has their head in the sand. Strongly worded, but, um, yeah, I mean, I've said for, I, I, I just, I think they have created false narratives that have been exposed. Uh, about, uh, Rick says about time someone in government is the balls to say and do what's needed. Thank you, Rick. Absolutely. I couldn't, that's why I got excited about what Chris said yesterday. Somebody finally had the balls to stand up to Stu. I appreciate it. Um, Michael LaRue said the Rays lied about the financials. No. Johnny Ballcinder says, I sure do wish the big dog could he be here for all this. Oh, me too. And Hank, I'm telling you, um, I think they'd be saying a lot of what, what, what's being said on this show, to be quite honest with you. They wouldn't be covering for Stu. Like I can tell you that. I can tell you that. Uh, Daniel Rivera says Ebor or the fairgrounds. If DeSantis gets involved with this, then the fairgrounds would make more sense if Hard Rock gets involved. We've talked about this. Political allies matter. Seven old Indians are allied with who? Ron DeSantis. Sports betting, lots of money, baseball, fairgrounds owned by the state. A lot of synergy, a lot of synergy there. And the new ownership group may have some alignment with that whole group there. Spin my web. Oh God. Yes. Tim, can you convince Jerry Jones to buy the Rays? No, wait, no. Although he would be, he would build a stadium. Like he's great financially.
Oh yeah.
Money into the team.
He would.
He would. You know, he'd have to have a press conference after every game. Does he know there's 162? So yes, I, well, I would like that type of owner though, you know? Uh, Richard Francis, uh, welcome to the show, my friend. JP, you are so right. Sternberg is a spoiled child. Call his bluff. If Nashville and Montreal and Portland want MLB so bad, where is their money? Thank you, Richard. Thank you. All these peoples. God, that's the false narrative that bugs me the most, I think. Besides the one that the Rays don't make any money is, oh, they're just going to move. They're going to move. We're going to lose them. We're going to move. We go, oh, we gotta give them everything you want. So he's going to move the Rays. They're not going anywhere. Major League Baseball has told you that they're not going anywhere. Oh. Daniel Rivera says, would a sale of the Rays get done before opening day? No, 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 this stuff takes time. Billion dollar deals. Um, I mean, they could probably have a framework and announce something, but then, you know, you don't want until that, this I's are dotted and T's are crossed with Stu. You got, you, you know, you don't want to say anything. Scott Rasnick says MLB needs to make Stu sell the team. Agreed. I think we're all in agreement.
Yeah.
Uh, Chris McColl says lineup Vikings are going to have 13, 14 wins. I'll be the number five seed. One of those two. For you. I love the NFC South.
Yep.
Um, did JP just call St. Pete Tampa's beach?
Yes, you did. You said all y'all, you said, uh, we're, you're our beaches. Is what you said. Cause I giggled too, when I heard that. I might make that a drop.
I didn't mean it that way.
You're our beaches. That's a quote. You said you're our beaches.
Oh, but they're our beaches. They're not our bitches. They're our beaches. And I don't want that. I don't want that connotation. There's that.
It just sounded funny. We knew what you meant. It just sounded funny.
You're right. You're right.
I was going to make it a drop and surprise you.
Yeah. So Stu Bird is MLB bridges on years of luxury tax scam. Yeah, absolutely. They're, the owners know all that too. They, and they're not pleased about that. And by the way, so you need to go through that Chris Lopola's speech and get me at least 10 drops. A penny pinching owner. I think you know, you know where we're going with this, all that stuff. So please, let's, and we can just play them all the time. Uh, James says, uh, all Bucks have to just keep winning because they control their dusty. That's right. Went out and it doesn't matter what Penix does. So true. Um, FDA continues to massage Stu's. Have more and more layoffs. Well, I think, you know, the fact that they're, you know, 19th, 20th in the ratings, um, has a lot to do with the fact that they've abandoned their P1 listeners.
I think I suddenly want them.
From a sports standpoint, yes, they have. And that's why they're down to three hosts and two local shows.
I think I suddenly want a massage. Okay. Got me going a little bit.
All right. Thank you for the comments. As we move on to what we were going to talk about, and that's, uh, the Falcons. I guess we gotta take another break now after we did.
Yeah, let's do that. Yeah.
All right. Quick break. Our breaks are not eight minutes, folks. They're just two and change now. We've, we've shortened them up. So, cause we love you so much. And we love art, but we love our, our advertisers as well. Like the golden diamond source. It's Christmas time. You go and shop in this, this week, go to the golden diamond source. They have a great selection. They have the best prices. 0% financing over five years. You can get a $5,000 diamond for just $84 a month, folks. It's easy. Whatever your budget is, head on in there. They've got a great new men's area that has all the baller watches and, and, and men's stuff, you know, that you'll really, really like. And of course gets up to for the ladies. Well, if you don't know what to get her, they have everything there. Okay. So go in there to the golden diamond source. Ask their great staff, you know, hey, I got a hundred bucks to spend. I got 200, you got 3,000, whatever it is. And they'll find you some stuff in your price range and they'll wrap it up nice and cute. You don't have to have, do the wrapping thing, which we hate so much. They'll wrap it all up for you. It's so easy. And you park right there. You walk right in. None of the mall stuff going on. It's the gold and diamond source. It's so easy. And we want to keep it local over this time. Uh, back in two and change. Stay with us.
Hey folks, let me tell you about Bay Area Modern Medical Center. A very different kind of approach to primary care, personalized preventative medicine, not a one pill fits all mentality. Christopher Lugo and his experienced medical staff are proactive in looking at issues before they become a problem, encouraging a healthy lifestyle with proper diet, supplements and exercise to optimize your active lifestyle. Rather than the impersonal rushed approach, you will be the only patient and will have our full attention. That's new. Getting old is inevitable, but feeling and looking old is avoidable. Bay Area Modern Medical Centers are experts in anti-aging, regenerative medicine that optimizes your body's performance in many areas. So call for an appointment to get started on a journey back to full health and a happy life with a new, modern way of healthcare. Call 844-977-3477 or go to B A M M C dot com. That's 844-977-3477 or B A M M C dot com. Hey JP here for the gold and diamond source. There's been a lot of talk about lab grown diamonds. Oh, they're just like a real thing. No, they're not. They're not the real thing. They're a lab girl. They're fake. You want to give your honey a fake diamond? Not a good way to start off the relationship, folks. Take my word for it. Get the real thing. And no place better to shop than the gold and diamond source. And remember, if you shop anywhere else, you don't know if it's real.
And remember, if you shop anywhere else, you don't know if it's real. You don't know what you're buying. The Golden Diamond Source has been in business for over 40 years. Julie and Steve Weintraub, great benefactors in our community. You know it's real. It's the only place to shop. And if you're planning to purchase for the holidays, don't forget to take advantage of our layaway offer at the Golden Diamond Source. You can reserve your favorite piece now and pay in easy installments, making your holiday shopping stress-free. As always, we offer up to five years, interest-free financing for just $84 a month when you finance $5,000. It's the only place to shop for the holidays. It's the Golden Diamond Source. 3800 Olmerton Road, always online at thegoldendiamondsource.com.
Hey Tampa Bay sports fans, this is two-time LPGA major champion Jane Geddes here. After winning the US Open and 10 other LPGA events, I wanted to try something completely different. So I came right off the top turnbuckle and landed in the crazy world of WWE. And yes, you heard that right. That's WWE. Working for the Vince McMahon as the VP of Talent Relations for the company. Now, though, I want to work for you. Everything I've done in my life, I've done with incredible passion. And now I've turned my focus to leading the best real estate team in Tampa Bay. The Geddes Gordon Group with Keller Williams in South Tampa. If you're looking for a new home, an investment property, or looking to sell your current home, we will give you major championship level service. When you choose Geddes Gordon Group, you become part of our inner circle, like family. So if you're looking for a few golf tips or golf course view, we're gonna stripe it right down the fairway. Call me at 813-485-6808. Or go to GeddesGordonGroup.com. Or again, give me a ring at 813-485-6808.
Let's go.
Right now. Back to the show on FanStream Sports.
All right, welcome back to the JP Peters Show. As we go around after the holidays, very popular. We're already getting a lot of hits in the local media. Aaron Parsigian over at Channel 10, who's done a great job covering this, I think, and Evan Kloski, who will join us on Friday, done a great job covering this and really appreciate them supporting the show and supporting the truth out there. And that's, and that's much needed in the local media. And our big thanks to ThirdGenerationPlumbing.com, Third Generation Plumbing. They do AC, they do plumbing, do all kinds of work around the house. So if you need some work done from the hurricane as well, they can do that. Great folks over there. John Rodriguez and the family have been in Tampa Bay since the 40s. This business has been in business since the 90s. And if it ain't right, he'll make it right. They are a very honest group and they get great reviews. Go see their five-star reviews at ThirdGenerationPlumbing.com. You can reach them through there. All right, so Kirk Cousins benched. We talked a little bit about this yesterday. I didn't, I didn't necessarily think Raheem had the stones to do it because of the contract situation, but I don't mean that in a bad way. I just mean, you know, it takes a lot from ownership and from the front office to make such a huge move and admit such a horrible mistake. And obviously, you know, I'm sure Raheem was all in on this. If, I'm not sure if he was ever in on the Cousins part of it.
Right.
And it was, it was a disaster from the beginning. We said it. And this is where they are. Unfortunately, they came to their senses too early. If you're a Bucks fan, because I think Michael Pennix is gonna make a huge difference for them. And I could see them going on the run, but as James pointed out, it doesn't matter now. Because the Bucks beat the Chargers and they have their destiny in their hands. And if they win these last three games, it doesn't matter what Michael Pennix does. It's too little, too late. And wouldn't that suck for Atlanta? How about if Michael Pennix just starts rolling, throwing, you know, four touchdowns every game? They win their last three games and they're out.
I still don't think that's bad. I mean, for the, for the, for the Falcons. And look, I have a theory on Kirk Cousins, by the way.
Okay.
We knew, we predicted it on the show, as many did, about him coming back from the Achilles at his age. And people, I think, underestimate not just the recovery, all right, to be able to play football again after coming back from that. And I think we're seeing much of the same with Aaron Rodgers.
Yeah.
Even when you come back and you are cleared to play, you're not the same thrower of the ball.
Nope.
Because you, you, there is a lot of, a lot of it's mental, not even physical sometimes. But you, you feel the need to kind of compensate for your, for that injury a little bit. Your throwing motion is different. Whether you think it is or not, it's always different. And Kirk Cousins, if you look at, look at film of him throwing the ball last year with the Vikings, or even when he was in Washington, and then you look at film of him throwing the ball this year, his throwing motion is completely different.
Different dude.
He is not using nearly as much lower body when he was, when he is throwing the ball this year. Because kind of, he's got that, that mental block that he's a little bit afraid of the injury. So dude, his arm is completely dead.
Yeah.
He has nothing left. His inability to use his lower body through now four, what, 13 games, 14?
Where you get all the power from.
Yeah, he's, he has only been using his upper body and his arm and he is, it's dead, man. He is.
Well, and he figured that out. And so now he has no options. You know, the short passes are being taken away. Teams see it on film. He can't push the ball downfield with any velocity or accuracy. So you move up and you just, you condense everything and then your run game is for shit. And it's terrible. We've, you know, we saw that late in Drew Brees' career where he couldn't push the ball down the field. It, you know, teams pick up on it and it matters. And now you got the best deep, maybe the best deep thrower in the game in Michael Pennix. I mean, he's, Bruce Arians said when he was coming out, you know, and if you watched any of his college tape, you saw it. I mean, go ask Jalen McMillan about Michael Pennix's deep ball. It's as good as I've seen in college.
Yeah.
Maybe since Joe Burrow, better. I think it's better than Joe Burrow. He throws it with an arc and an anticipation that is just so good. And he can transform that offense immediately. And from what I've heard from my Atlanta people, and we'll try to get Archer on the show tomorrow. He's been doing it in practice. So I think they hit the ground running, especially against the Giants. But again, too little, too late.
You know who he looks like throwing the ball to me? I'm going back a little ways. Randall Cunningham.
Yeah, nice arc on the ball.
Arc on the ball.
You know what, you know what I'm saying? In the same side, the snake. He reminds me of Kenny Stabler. Kenny, God, he had that great three-quarters delivery.
A lefty too. Yeah, that's a good comparison. I, you know what? I hate left-handed quarterbacks. I
Why?
I, it looks awkward to me. Have you ever caught a, caught a pass from a left-handed quarterback? It's like learning how to catch all over again.
Yeah, it's got a different spin to it. Yeah, yeah, it's absolutely, there's an adjustment to it. I think it looks great. I think lefties can make, they look so graceful doing everything, pitching.
Oh, batting for sure. Yeah.
They do. Why do they look? And you know what I love? Like, looking in, you know, I love looking in the mirror. You know, if you look in a mirror, you become left-handed, right? Back view. So yeah, well, if you're watching, if you're watching ever a video, somebody's taking a video, we were playing golf one time and had the back camera on, right? And it's, everything's turned around. So my swing was in the background, lefty. I was like, oh, that looks so good. My swing looks so good. Why is it at all? Why do lefties look so smooth? All of, I don't know what it is.
Look, there's been a lot of good left-handed quarterbacks in the NFL. Steve Young, Michael Vick, Kenny Stabler, Tim Tebow, Mark Brunel, Matt Leiner, Marinovich, I mean, Chris Sim, just name a bunch of them, dude. But man, it's, for me, it is hard.
Guys weren't so good, by the way. Yeah.
Well, that's, that's
They still look good. They look marvelous.
Todd Marinovich.
Listen, I think, you know, for the Bucks, just keep doing what you're doing. Now, I said this before the Chargers game. I thought that they would stumble on the way in because their defense has been so inconsistent. Now, it hasn't been inconsistent. It's been, well, I guess it has been inconsistent because it's been really good the last month against bad teams and bad quarterbacks. But the Chargers are not that, and they made them look really pedestrian in the second half. Maybe that was because their quarterback was on one leg, whatever, don't care. The numbers are what they are. There's a number one scoring defense the last month and number three in scoring offense. So, look, they're, you know, the Bucks just need to stay focused and take care of the teams. The Cowboys, Cowboys run defenses is deplorable. They should, you know, Bucky Irving should have a big day. Rashad White should have a big day. They should control the game with the ground game and then use their explosives. The Bucks are playing great football right now. And they're gonna hopefully get, get a little bit healthier here down the stretch with Anton Winfield coming back. Maybe Mike Edwards comes back and we were told what a huge part of the defense he could be. So, yeah, I'm like, they're in a good spot.
I mean, let me give
Really good spot.
Let me give Liam Cohen the best advice I can possibly give Liam Cohen going into Sunday night.
What's that?
Wherever Micah Parsons lines up, run the other way. There you go. Demarvion Overstone's out for the year. So he, he doesn't have the safety valve on the other side like he did. So wherever Micah Parsons lines up.
Run the other way.
Run the other way. It doesn't matter.
Good running at him because he's not huge. I mean, I've heard that, you know, the, you know, fast pass rushers hate being run at all game long. So, and will he line up over Tristan Wirfs every time? Or does he?
No, he'll move. He'll move.
Move around.
And by the way, he moves at his discretion. This is not called by Mike Zimmer. I can be once on the left side. Micah Parsons goes where Micah Parsons wants to go on that particular play and the rest of the defensive line accommodates. So you don't know, he doesn't even know where he's gonna line up. So just wherever it is, Baker, you might have to audible some of this. Just run the other way.
Yeah.
And do you realize now with, with Michael, Michael Pennix playing, we have five of the top six rookie quarterbacks are now starting for their respective teams.
How about that?
Caleb Williams, Jaden Daniels, Bo Nix, Drake May, Michael Pennix, and the only one that's not, J.J. McCarthy, because he's hurt.
Because he's hurt. And now what do they do at quarterback? And he played well, obviously, before he got hurt. And then, you know, they got decisions to make. No, no question about it.
How you don't retain Sam Darnold in Minnesota?
Yeah. Yeah, but, you know, McCarthy looks good, too.
He does. But look, I'm not afraid of the Michael Pennix thing. You and I discussed this yesterday for a little bit. You cannot ask a rookie quarterback to come in and fix your offense. And that offense is broken beyond Kirk Cousins. There are other things wrong with that offense.
Yeah, but who do they play down the stretch? I think they got the Giants this week. And then I think they finish with the Saints and Panthers as well, right? Just the opposite weeks.
They have to finish the season Giants, Commanders, Panthers.
Giants, Commanders. I forgot the Commanders. Yeah. See, that Commander's game.
And it's at Washington.
Game. For them. And that's at Washington. Probably gonna be a cold weather game, right? And the Falcons play inside mostly. So I think
I wouldn't be surprised to see the Panthers beat them either on the, on January 5th.
Okay, so you
It's in Carolina.
Yeah, I'm not sitting here saying that Pennix is gonna, they're gonna run the table with them. I'm just thinking that they, they could. But I don't think they will. I think they got more issues than just quarterback. I would agree with you. But, you know, it's regardless. Take care of your business, Bucks. Take care of your business and that's all.
I mean, this, this is a desperation move by Atlanta. I mean, there's no question, right? There are three games left. You're behind the Bucks and your, your, your only hope is to catch the Bucks. And, right. And you're not going to. Unless the Bucks lose all three games. And even then, I mean, it's just, I don't know. It's, it's a desperation move. And it's, to me, it's a little laughable to do it right now with three games left. I don't know.
I was looking to see if we got any updates on people practicing today.
By the way, the Buffalo Bills, in case you didn't see this, if they score 30 points this weekend, they can be the first team in the history of the NFL to score 30 points in nine state, nine straight games in the same season.
Yeah, the Bills are ridiculous. And the numbers that Josh Allen is putting up, you know, two touchdowns running and two touchdowns passing. He's the first one to do it in like four straight games. He's just, I mean, he's just far and away the NFL MVP without question.
You know, and I've, I have knocked him his whole career. I mean, he's, I've always thought he was good, right? I never thought he was a top-tier quarterback. To me, he was the light, Dak Prescott. Okay, ton of turnovers, bad decisions, probably ran too much. But dude, this season, he has turned all of that around. 25 touchdowns, five picks. He is, and he is doing everything right at the right time.
What do you think the difference is?
Man, I wish I knew. I mean, it's not, it's not their offensive coordinator, right? Because he's been there. He was there last year.
I think he came in last year, but also no Stevon Diggs.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, see, you don't have
Sometimes
Diggs chirping in his ear.
Exactly. Sometimes addition by
How that sounds.
By subtraction. Yeah. And now, you know, it's a more team and they gotta, you know, the running game is better. So more balance, more Baker Mayfield-like.
Yeah. So, but man, MVP candidate, dude, he might, he, I mean, I don't know. I don't know.
Josh?
Yeah.
Oh, come on. It's done. It's done. It's over. Unless Baker throws, you know, 30 touchdown passes the rest of the way. I don't, I mean, who else is even?
Lamar's having another good season. Lamar's having a good season. Who else do you throw out there? There's just not, there's nobody's really standing out, right?
Barkley. I mean, Saquon's had a tremendous year, although he's, he's tailed off the last couple of weeks. I don't know if he's
Yeah, he's not gonna break, he ain't gonna break Dickerson's record. He's not gonna get there now.
Yeah, he's, he's been a little bit more pedestrian. I need him this week, though, in my fans. I'm in the championship game against my good friend Kevin Keever, who I saw last night, former USF basketball player. Yeah, we got two wagons going at it this week for the championship game. He's got Josh Allen. And I'm starting, I'm starting Baker this week. So I need him to have a big week over this crappy Cowboys defense. Come on, Baker, let's go.
Watch the Cowboys. Cowboys are gonna shut them out.
Stop.
I mean, that would be a very Cowboys thing to do and a very Bucks thing to do, man. You know it?
Please.
Hey, I'm pulling for the Bucks, okay? Because my Cowboys ain't going to the playoffs. So I'm pulling for Bucks the rest of the way, including through the playoffs. So I'm cheering. We can't cheer in the press box, but if I can get in the press box, I might have a Bucks hat on when I'm there.
Oh, no. Oh, no. So last night at Emily Arena, joyous night there. So I get there to my station and what is waiting for me on my beautiful anchor desk there?
Oh, no.
The dreaded elf costume.
Oh, no.
That I wore last
Did you have to elf it up?
I said, no. Said I'm not doing it. I've had enough.
Oh, no. You didn't even wear a hat?
Nope. No, I had my nice, my new blue blazer, the real festive one. I love, a lot of compliments on. And I said, I'm gonna cover up this beauty with that elf costume. You know, for once, I'm just not gonna be a team player.
What'd your producer say to that?
They weren't happy. They weren't happy. Got a couple side eyes, ain't gonna lie.
Wow.
I just, it just meant, I just wasn't mentally prepared for it. They kind of
Sprung it on you?
Sprung it on me, you know, and I just wasn't mentally prepared. So I'm gonna work up to it on Thursday. So we still have our holiday motif going for the next couple of games before Christmas. So I gotta just mentally kind of work into it. Because I took a lot of abuse last year and rightfully so. Grown ass man should not be wearing that.
You know, something I, something I looked, I noticed in the box score last night, looking at the Lightning Blue Jackets game, was their attendance. It's a Tuesday night game.
Uh huh.
And they had over 19,000 people at Emily on a Tuesday night game. Are you trying to tell me that the Lightning averaged more at home than the Rays do every year?
Oh, my God. It's not even close.
It's amazing.
Close. Think it has something to do with the owner?
Maybe.
Do you think it has something to do with where the arena is?
Yeah, definitely.
Do you think it has something to do with what the arena looks like and how they treat their fans?
Like, who in Tampa can drive all the way to, to the trop for a midweek game? The first pitch, 7:05 or whatever, like who can get there from Tampa, first of all, in time after work, right?
No, it's very difficult. This just in, breaking news. It's all the stuff that we talked about the stadium, like recently. And the one thing we never even talk about is the fact that is, is the most damning thing about the whole damn deal. You're building in a failed location. It's, it's already proven to be a shit location. And not only is the deal horrible, it's a bad idea. And we don't even talk about that anymore. You know, we talk about how ridiculously expensive it is, how horrible a deal it is and how bad the owner, all that stuff is to, over the most important thing of the whole thing. It's a horrible idea. It doesn't work. It's proven. And we're still gonna do this. Don't get me going.
Already got you going.
The Bolts last night, after I failed to inspire them with my elf outfit, buddy, they they broke out to a four-nothing lead. And Nick Paul owned the second period with three points, a goal and two assists. Nick Paul was fantastic.
He barely missed one at the end of the first, right? He had a breakaway at the end of the first.
Yes, it could have been so much more.
Yeah.
Glenn Denning scores early on with a great, like, redirect in front, though he slaps the puck down. And that, that was a great, great shot, a redirect. And weirdest stat of the day from our folks at FanDuel Sports Network, the Bolts are 11-0 when Luke Glenn Denning scores, going back to last year, because he didn't score much. They're 11-0 when he scores. Weird. So the game was over as soon as he scored. And so they're up four-nothing. And, you know, Vassi on, we have a great ceremony before the game, celebrating his 500th. Gets all the prizes, gets all the stuff. It's fantastic. And he's playing his ass off. And you're like, we're on our way to a shutout on Vassi night. And then, oh, no. This, a turnover, shorty, four-one, then another turnover. As Coop said last night, we're trying to get the fifth goal. We don't need the fifth goal, boys. Don't need a fifth goal. We just need not to have a second goal. And they give up a three-on-one the other way. Now we're four-two. other way. Now we're four two. And they get, we take another penalty. Cole Sillinger from the slot. Now it's four three. And there's like eight minutes left. Well, I'm like, oh, Jesus, what the hell just happened? And luckily, they, they withstood the storm from there. Pointer gets an empty netter and the Bolts win 5-3 and get their two points. But, um, yeah, not, you know, a little bit of, you know, long road trip, go three and one, doing great. That's fantastic. You come back home, that first game's always the bitch, right? It's always the bitch. It's always a letdown game. So the let down didn't come until the third period, but you found a way to win. And that's what matters. And your two points now, so that now you're four points behind Toronto with two games in hand, four points behind the Panthers with three games in hand. And you got a home and home against the Panthers this weekend, Saturday, Sunday. So it tells us a lot about what's going on with the Lightning, two really good teams. But all the metrics, everything, now you're getting scoring, Chafee scored last night, you're getting balanced scoring. Headman was back, you're getting a little healthier. J.J. Moser, I have no idea when he's gonna be back. Maybe it might be a couple of weeks. We'll see. But everything about the, the Lightning's game right now, you just absolutely love. They're playing fantastic hockey.
We talked to Brian Bradley yesterday. He was at Morning Skate right here on the JP Peterson Show. It's always good to have Brian on too, man. That guy's just a wealth of freaking knowledge. Uh, and, you know, I told him, I said, the, the Jackets aren't a good team unless they score three or more goals. And I think their record yesterday coming into the game was like 11, three and three. When they score three or more. I say, you gotta keep them under three. Well, I mean, if you score five, then the three is not gonna hurt you. So you beat the odds a little bit. You had a fast start. Nick Paul was a goon yesterday. And that's all you needed. You get the win. And they're horrible on the road, by the way. The, yeah, the Lightning or the Jackets, I think, have four wins all year on the road. So.
Yeah, we got the Blues coming in on Thursday, who lost last night. They were six, six and two and two in their last 10. Then they lost last night to the Devils four one. But they'll be coming on Tuesday. Yeah. Since their coaching change, they've really turned it around. So they're kind of a new club. And they'll be wanting to measure themselves against the Lightning on, on Thursday night. So that should be a good one. Please join us. Plenty of good seats available there. Yeah, you know, even, you know, the 19,000, a lot of that's tickets sold and we have such a huge season ticket base. You're having, you're a sellout just almost every game. You know, there've been some empty seats. You can get tickets on a secondary market, even from the Lightning, actually. Go to Tampa Bay Lightning dot com. Plenty of tickets available. But it's a great show. It's always a great show. I was talking to some of the season ticket holders last night and just, you know, saying what a great job. And we're talking about, everybody asked me, what's going on with the Rays? What's going on with the Rays? And then it's like, you know, let's talk about the Lightning and what they do right. And it's always been one of my arguments is like, you don't need to reinvent the wheel. It's the greatest template in Tampa Bay history. A, a sport that nobody played growing up, you know, generationally. I mean, obviously this last generation does play hockey because the Lightning have made it the thing to do in Tampa Bay. But, I mean, everybody grew up playing baseball and we, you know, couldn't quote, support the team. It's not about that. But the Lightning did it. You know, community involvement, the community hero initiative has been such a huge way of bonding with the community. It was brilliantly done by, by Jeffrey Vinnick. And I've told this story many times, but we got a lot of new viewers today. So I'll just, this is kind of wraps the whole thing up. It's just back when Vinnick first bought the team, he was a couple of years in. And he's doing the community hero thing. And I was having a lunch with, with Matt Silverman at the time. And, you know, he was trying to get me to, you know, stop calling Stu a liar. And I said, well, tell Stu to stop lying. And I said, I said, he's just stop blaming the fans. I mean, you should like partner with the fans, partner with the community. He hasn't, I was trying to explain to him, he hasn't, you know, I said, look at Jeffrey Vinnick. He's, this community hero thing is taking off like wildfire. He's giving away $50,000 every game. I mean, people are talking about this. It's, it's really a big deal. And he's connecting with the community and there's, they have this great community outreach thing where they're sending players out to all the schools, every elementary school. Every kid gets a hockey stick in his hand. It's like, this is crazy what they're doing over here. You should really kind of embrace this template, you know, and they're in Tampa, you know, and they have a great arena. And they, they're just really fan friendly and friends, uh, just zeroed in on the fans. And he said about, you know, about the community hero thing, he goes, yeah, he goes, let's see, you know, let's see how long that lasts. You know, giving away that 50,000 bucks. Let's see how long it lasts, he said. You know, knowing, saying that, you know, the community just doesn't support us like they do him. And I'm like, yeah, well, it's, it's, it's because of your owner, probably. It's because of the way you guys run stuff. And so.
There you go.
How's it going 14 years later? $60 million, 509, whatever it is, community heroes. It's, it's literally the best thing I've ever seen in sports in terms of connecting with your fan base and turning it around. And look what they've had, 400 sellouts in a row. And spent the money, the players, two Stanley Cups. Everything flows from that. Everything flows from your community support. Tony Dungy told his players that in their first meeting, they all went, what, what? And then they went and won a Super Bowl, you know, at that group. So, yeah. All right. We'll wrap it up with that. We're gonna get out a little early today, have some other business work to do. We thank you guys so much for watching. Don't forget, if you ever miss anything, the FanStream Sports app is a great way to download that app. You won't miss anything in the show. Listen to it anytime. You can also obviously go to our YouTube, Facebook pages, all our social medias. Please like and subscribe. We need more subscribers on the YouTube page. So please do that as well. And our new Twitter add to JP Peterson Show. Have a great day, everybody. The Wicked Witch is dead. Long live the Rays in Tampa Bay. We'll see you tomorrow.